Chamber of Commerce Candidate Forum. Tonight, we'll be interviewing individuals running for election for two different local races, the Milton School District Board of Education and the Milton City Council. My name is Jim Like, and I will be your moderator this evening, and the format for the evening will be as follows. Each candidate will begin with a two-minute opening statement. After that, we'll be asking each candidate questions that have been prepared by members of the Milton Area Chamber of Commerce. Once a candidate has been asked the question, they will have two minutes to give their answer. When there's 30 seconds left in the time allotment, Sherry Yonkey or Joe Lynn, are you going to do it? One of the two back there will be holding up a sign to alert you that you have 30 seconds remaining. We'll then hold up another card at 10 seconds so that you can wrap up your answer, and finally, a bell will ring when your time is up, just like that. And you'll get room service at the same time. And if you keep going after the bell, watch out, I have been given a gavel. Don't make me use it.
Are there demerit points?
Well, you know, we make you sit in a corner if you keep going. To determine the order in which the candidates are asked questions, we'll have each candidate draw a card from the ace, two, and three of spades that Mr. Mark Warren is bringing up to the candidates now. Whoever gets the low card will be the first one to answer a question, and then we will just follow in order as we would a board game.
One, two, three.
Wow. You couldn't have made that more easy for me, thank you.
That's the first time I've ever won any.
Other than an election?
Yes.
All right. Very good. Now, beyond the questions that the chamber has prepared, we may, if time allows, have an opportunity to take a question or two from the audience. If audience members do have questions, please write them on an index card. Mark Warren has index cards, so write one on an index card and give it to Mark. If we have time and your question is appropriate, we'll try to fit it in, but please don't be offended if we are not able to do so. We'll begin with our candidates for the school board this evening, and then, after a short break, we'll continue with the city council candidates at 7:00 PM. So without further ado, I'd like to introduce the school board candidates. We have three candidates running for two seats. From left to right, we have incumbent Tom Westrick, challenger Shelley Krelhanke, and incumbent John Cruzan. Welcome, all three of you, and thank you for joining us this evening.
Thank you, Jim.
All right. Tom, you get to start with your two-minute opening statement, so please, go ahead.
First of all, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to come before this group. I'll start off by just telling a little bit about myself. I was born and raised in Milton, went through Milton schools, even went through the old one-room country schools that had all eight grades in one room. Graduated from then Milton Union High School, and then graduated from Milton College with a degree in Broadfield Social Studies. I had a great opportunity to work for General Motors. I also had the opportunity of working on both sides of the table at General Motors. I was able to work as a salaried employee and an hourly employee. When I retired, five years ago now, almost, I was the administrator of the UAW GM Education Center, which was part of the Education and Training Department. That really gave me a real thorough understanding on some of the skills that our employees needed, and then also skills that people need to get good jobs when they're out in the marketplace. I've had quite a good experience with volunteering. I was on the Blackhawk Technical College Board of Directors for 19 years, and I served as president for several terms. I'm now the president of the Milton Area Youth Center, which is a youth center here in Milton. I'm involved with St. Mary's Catholic Church, and I really enjoy being with my grandson. I think one of the reasons why I ran for school board was I always seemed to have had a craving to help people learn. When I graduated from college, my degree was in education, and found that I wanted to continue the education on the adult level, and then back to the school level, and that's why I ran for the school board three years ago. Boy, that time went by really fast. And that's why.
Not as much as you wish.
Sorry, I missed the 30.
All right, thank you, Tom. Shelley, go ahead.
Hi, thank you for inviting me. I am Shelley Krelhanke, and I'm running for Milton School Board. I originally grew up in Evansville, and my grandparents raised me. My grandmother's in the audience today. And we moved to Janesville in third grade where I graduated from Craig High School. I'm married to my husband, Gary, and we have two children, Cedric, who's a freshman at UW-Milwaukee, and Carly, who is in seventh grade at the middle school here in Milton. I've lived in the Milton School District for 10 years. I attended Blackhawk Technical College my first year out of school, and got a medical assistant degree, went to Urock for two years, got my associates, continued on at Whitewater where I got my BSc in Education, and got my master's from UW-Lacrosse. I've taught in the middle school science for 22 years in the Beloit-Turner School District, and I've been involved in many committees at the Turner School District, including the diversity committee, superintendent and search committee. I am co-advisor of the middle school, high school pride club, and have been on numerous interview committees. I've also been on the negotiations committee for over 15 years. At my church, I volunteered on mission trips, and have also volunteered for the men's gift shelter. In Milton, I volunteered for many school conference meals because that's the one thing I can do is make food while the teachers need that. I've been, was a member of the 2007-2008 High School Design Committee, and have volunteered for the MS Milton Mud Run for the past three years. I've also been a part, for many years, I was part of the Rock County Aquatics Managers Committee, where I was involved with Milton, Evansville, and Edgerton Pool Managers, so I'm familiar with the aquatic system here in Milton. I'm excited about running for the position of school board and to be an active participant in the Milton School District's future planning, which will include addressing the space and facility upgrades, implementing the K-12 technology plan, addressing the many mandates which include common core standards, RTI, next-generation science standards, and educator effectiveness, retaining and hiring qualified and quality staff. So I'm really looking forward to the opportunity of possibly working with the school board and making a difference, since my kids are in school right now. I'm looking at a chance to be able to do things right now for them.
All right. Thank you very much, Shelley. Just a reminder to all the candidates, make sure your microphone is on. Shelley, you won't have that problem because yours is eternally on, but just make sure that you have the green light on the front of your microphone. So, John, go ahead with your statement, please.
I'm John Cruzan. I believe that quality education is vitally important to the future and long-term success of Milton. The high quality of our schools already differentiates Milton from other communities. I believe it supports our property values and maintains the quality of life which we all enjoy and of which we are quite proud. School district's really a nebulous entity, and it really is all of us. It's the fabric of the culture of the community. I believe in excellence. We have an outstanding school system, but it takes constant vigilance to keep that edge. I believe in accountability across all the stakeholders in the system, and I truly believe that one size does not fit all. If we have a singular focus, I think we'll fail. The needs of primary students, staff, and buildings are likely not the needs of those in upper elementary, junior high, or secondary schools, and the priorities and needs of athletics may not be the priorities and needs of academics or the arts, but each is a piece of the huge spectrum of education, and all must be considered. A balanced perspective will move us forward with continuous positive progress for all. My background is 35-plus years in corporate human resources, covers a broad spectrum of employee relations, wage and salary, employee files, employee benefits, you name it, it's a big gamut. I think that's a unique experience to bring to the school board. I think we need to engage in continuous quality improvement. We have to benchmark against best practice. If we don't, we'll fall behind. We have to constantly be reaching for where we can go. I have extensive experience working with committees, groups, and organizations. That experience has allowed me to develop and hone skills that help these groups form synergies to accomplish their goals. I'm best characterized as a listener and a consensus builder. I believe that both of these skills are valuable to serving on the school board. I have served two terms, six years, and I'm ready for a third.
All right. Thank you very much, candidates. We will start with Tom Westrick, since you won the draw with the first question, and because the chamber is a business organization, our first question concerns business. Tom, how do you feel the Milton School District is doing in preparing students for the world of work? And as a second part to that, what partnerships with the business community do you think have yet to be pursued that would be beneficial?
I think the Milton School District prepares the students to go on to four-year colleges in an excellent way, with all the AP opportunities that the district offers. For students that know they want to go on to college, I think Milton does a great job. I think where Milton can do a better job is to try to help the kids that are undecided on what they want to do after they get out of high school. It used to be, if the students were undecided, they had a couple of things to fall back on. They could have fallen back on either going to work at the plant or going in the military. The plant is gone, and the military requirements are much stricter now. So I think we need to do a little better job of preparing and helping the students that are undecided try to help them gain the skills needed to be successful in whatever they choose, whether it's going on to a technical college or getting a job out into the workplace. The second part of the question, what can we do with the community? I think with Blackhawk Technical College coming to town, we've also already had many conversations with Blackhawk and how we can partner with Blackhawk in helping get some of the needed instructors, equipment, and skills for the students to, when they graduate, to get out into the world of work. And hopefully, with Blackhawk in the community, a lot of the other businesses in the area will take advantage of them as well.
All right. Thank you, Tom. Shelley, how do you feel the district is doing in preparing students for the world of work, and are there any partnerships with the business community that might be beneficial?
Well, one of the things I know the Milton Education Association has done is join the Chamber of Commerce, so I think right there with the teachers' union tying in with the Chamber of Commerce, that has opened the door to have some working policies between the two groups. And also, I agree about what Tom was saying about the high school tracking. My student was, my child was the child who went through the tech ed department route and had the opportunity to do welding, woodworking. He took almost all of the tech ed opportunity classes that were there, but there wasn't a next initiative step there, where I know some districts, City of Beloit in particular, has tied in with technical school, with Blackhawk, and the businesses to have kids even get one year of their degree for credit while they're in school with their initiative there. I was at the board presentation with Blackhawk a couple weeks ago, and it sounds like it's going to be a great plan and a great partnership that's going to tie in the students with the technical training, and hopefully, there'll be the opportunity to have local businesses where the kids will either be able to be hired or job shadow or be employed once they leave there. I know some of my students at Turner had taken the opportunity to do the welding program, and were able to get hired as a school-to-work program in a welding program through Blackhawk, and maybe through youth options and some of those other avenues that they'll be able to get credits while they're in their junior and senior years. Would be a great opportunity. I think by having more businesses come into this area also, that will make a difference for the schools and the students getting that opportunity. Like you said, many of the businesses have closed, manufacturing businesses, but there are plenty out there that are willing to take, you know, a smaller family business that would take on students to have that opportunity to get the experience.
All right. Thank you. John?
I think the district does quite well in preparing students for the world of work. I'd agree with Tom, especially on the academic side. I think we could beef up the technical side. As far as technology and the world of computers and those kinds of applications, I think Milton has already stated itself as a leader in those issues. I work in an organization of 4,000 employees, and there's hardly a job that exists that does not interface with the computer in nearly everything that they do, and I think it's critical that we have those skills for our students all the way through their education, and we're well ahead on that path. I think that's a phenomenal initiative that we have. I think the Silver Cord Program that is out there, which has kids volunteering and service groups, service agencies, give back to the community in a variety of ways, helps teach job skills from another perspective. It teaches give back to the community, teaches responsibility. It teaches some of those, in some ways, softer skills in a way, which I think is a part of the educational process as well. You probably never can develop business relationships for students to a degree where you need to stop doing that. I think we continually need to be creative about how do we get students out into our businesses? How do we make them part of the fabric of the community? They're the future of Milton. They're the ones that are going to be running our stuff when we're old and feeble and can't anymore, and I think the more experiences we can provide. It's a challenge to do that. It's a challenge for the businesses. It's a challenge for the schools, the management. I think we need to continue to try to drive things that, that way. I think it's important to have that mix.
All right. Thank you very much. Our second question, and we will lead off with Shelley Krelhanke for this one. And this kind of, this question kind of follows up on one of the points that John was making. We've all been seeing about the great strides in technology that the district is doing as they're leading the way in having portable devices in all of the students' hands. How do you think the district should be addressing the concerns about social skill development, interpersonal skills, security of personal information, appropriateness of posts, and online bullying?
Well, as a parent of a seventh grader, I'm living that daily between our home devices and the school devices. I have not seen, among her friends, any issues with the school devices. I've been just amazed at the things that they have been doing, and she's been able to produce in her classes with the iPads that are coming home, because I really didn't have a whole lot of background in what to expect on that. The social skills and the safety and personal safety and bullying and harassing is a continual issue and a continual worry, no matter whether they have their phones, their iPods, their iPads, their laptops. And I think that has to be addressed in part of their PBIS system, which I think they have done a good job at the middle school, in teaching them personal responsibility for their computers and learning what to do and what not to do. The community has offered several speakers coming in to teach on that and to talk about that, and there's been very few parents at that. When they had the professor come in from UW-O'Clare, I think there were 10 people in the audience, and I was one of those 10. So I think the opportunities are there, but the parents need to take the initiative to come to the offerings that the police department and the community and the schools are providing them. The technology, I think, is going to be an issue coming up through the grades, but most kids, like I said, have been on there. It's training the parents to know what is on the systems and how to look for them. That's my weakest knowledge right now as a parent. Between Instagram and Skyping and all the different things, Snapchat and all these different things that are out there, I do not know how to access them. So I think training the parents and the families would be the greatest gift the district could give to the families who are starting this initiative with the technology plan.
All right. Thank you very much. John, as the students all have portable devices, how do you think the district should be addressing the concerns about social skill development, interpersonal skills, security of personal information, online bullying?
There's a couple of issues, probably more than that, in that question, but to jump into the personal safety, the bullying, those kinds, I think the school district addresses those. I think the community addresses those a lot. I think those efforts need to be continued, because I don't think it's something you teach and lay out and people grab it right away. It would be wonderful to engage families and parents more than they are, because that's where a lot of that responsibility has to lie, but I think the school districts need to continue to have that out there, as there are, there are things out there that are scary in that whole arena to some degree. Social skill development, interpersonal skills, that's an interesting question. As an employer, I see that in the workplace. I have adults who don't know how to interact with each other, who don't have very good social skills, who quite frankly are doing bullying kinds of behaviors in the workplace. Kids are sometimes learning it from their own families. People wouldn't call it that, but that's exactly what's happening. If I knew how to fix that, I could make a lot of money and write books about it, but it's a serious problem, and I'm not making light of it. I think kids do need to have interpersonal skills. I was at a job fair today. I had high school students coming and talking with me, even though I couldn't hire them, I applauded them for coming and going through that experience. They need to know how to approach adults. They need to know how to interact out in a world that's not texting and not computer-oriented. So I think if we can provide opportunities, I think we do, I think we just need to continue to do those kinds of things. A big, big component out in today's workplace, young people, even adults coming out, don't know those kinds of skills very well. It was a problem 30 years ago, and it still is. I think we have to continually try to get at that. The schools will play a key role, whether we should or not. We're going to be thrust into that and have to do it, so.
I echo what Shelley and John had to say. I think that the parents, the school district has to supply some type of help for the parents to understand the teachings, the lessons through the iPads, what things are available, what things aren't, what things are blocked off, what things are not blocked. One of the reasons I strongly supported the iPad initiative through Apple is everyone would have the same type of personal device, where you wouldn't have to worry about someone bringing a device from home having not the same safeguards as the ones issued by the school district. Social skills, I have a fear that people are going to forget how to verbally communicate. You see it all the time. You see people texting, people sitting on both sides of the table texting back and forth. It's hard to get a tone from a text unless you are really in all the bold and everything, but I think the, we're losing the act of verbal communication and being able to look someone in the eye and have a conversation. You can judge the body language and everything else. So that's my concern with using too much technology. Granted, we are in the one-to-one initiative, but that's not the only curriculum we're having. We're still having the other parts of the curriculum that teach soft skills and communications and all of those things that are necessary for our students to be successful in the world of work.
Thank you. Our next question, we will start with John Cruzan. John, the future of Wisconsin Act 10 will be decided this year by the Supreme Court. Do you believe that the law has worked, and do you support its being upheld? And if not, what specifically do you think should be changed?
Oh, that's a great question.
See, now we're getting into the meat of it.
Yeah, we certainly are. You know, I don't have infinite wisdom. I don't know if it was the best solution. I don't know if it was the right way to go. I do know it is the way it is at this point, and I think we have to react to that and go forward based on the rules, the way they are drawn. That may be upheld. If they're not, then we, then we regroup and look at it that way. I don't think there's anybody anywhere who has a complete understanding of the ramifications of all of that bill. It's very far-reaching, changed lives for a lot of people in this community, in every community in Wisconsin. It's really hard for me to talk about a level of detail. I think it's a reality that's out there. I think we have to continue to use the best counsel we can get, because we are, we're non-professionals in that arena. We're novices in a way. Yes, we serve on a board, but we are not all-knowing about those things, and I think we have to seek our sources of guidance and continue to march along, making the best decisions we can with the cards that have been dealt to us that, again, keep students in the forefront. And I think we have to keep that focused, and I think that's going to be a continuing moving bogey of how we try to get at that.
All right. Thank you. Tom, should Wisconsin Act 10 be upheld? If not, what do you think should be changed?
The idea of taking away a group's opportunity to talk about their job and to negotiate different things, I think that's stepping on some rights. I agree with John. At this point, we really don't know what Act 10 is all about, because it's new to everybody, so we don't know the ramifications. But I am against the fact that taking away the people's, a group of people's rights to talk about their job, and that's basically what Act 10 does. I think the Milton School District, in the last year that we've had to play the cards that we were dealt, we had to develop a teacher handbook, and we worked through the Human Resource Committee, and I think we came up with some pretty good solutions to the problems that we had because of those cards that we were dealt. We have to make sure that our employees are dealt with fairly, they're treated with respect, and they expect to be treated that way as well. So, but for someone to say you can't, you can't sit down and talk about your job as a group, I'm against that.
All right. Thank you. Shelley?
Hi, yeah. I believe that it should not be upheld. I'm not a fan of the Act 10, and I think it's divided not only families, neighbors, teachers, the state over this issue. I've never seen anything so political happen since 2010 in this state of Wisconsin that the nation has been following. Collective bargaining does need to be restored to teachers. It's put a great division among the administration and the unions and the whether teachers are going to be in the unions, not in the unions, whether they're going to, what they can bargain, which is so little now. They aren't able to talk about their benefits or their health insurance. The handbooks in most areas around this part of the state have been pretty reasonable, but when you look at other extreme school districts, it's really made teaching a very negative profession to go into. We're having a hard time even getting teachers to apply for positions, and having quality teachers apply for the positions is the issue. And I think a lot of students are really looking twice at even going into education because of what's happened in the state. The per pupil aid formula and the reduction of that has really put an impact on everything in the schools, whether it's from staffing to supplies to building facilities and, you know, everything that goes with it. And I think, as both of these men have said, it's very difficult to even know how to interpret some of the laws, because they seem to be fluid some of the times, and you're not, as a district, as the administration, I sat at board meetings, and they're like, well, I think this is what this is going to be interpreted as, but it could change the next time. So you're not really sure how you're even formulating, you know, retirement and the different calculations of different things for the teachers. And I think it's really put a division on how to compensate teachers and staff fairly. All the districts are kind of shuffling, because we do not have the salary grids anymore, schedules that we used to have, and we're not being compensated for credits and movement for getting masters, so we have a lot of professional teachers not even getting their masters anymore. And that would be something that you would have wanted to have in the past. So it's going to be a challenge to see what happens.
All right. Thank you very much. Our next question, we are back to Tom Westrick. Tom, do you foresee a referendum in the future for the Milton School District regarding space needs, or do you even anticipate one to alleviate operating costs?
Probably, probably morsel on the facilities end of things, but it certainly would be worth having a conversation as far as the operating costs as well. A lot of our facilities are very old. The high school has some really expensive projects that are going to be coming up here soon, meaning the pool. There are a lot of substandard conference-wise facilities. The gymnasium is one example, that if you go to the other, to other events and other conferences, it's just, it's subpar. So at some point in time, I think we're going to have to look at revisiting the committee that both John and Shelley were on not too many years ago, when we expected a huge enrollment. But I don't think a potential enrollment increase is going to be the only reason why we have to visit that, just to look at some of our aging facilities and whether or not it's, it's going to be more beneficial financially to build something new or to continue to remodel and repair the facilities we have. But we will have some very expensive maintenance items coming up in the next few years, so the answer is yes to both.
All right. Thank you. Shelley?
I agree. I think the referendum discussion needs to happen probably sooner than later. As a part of the design team in 2008, none of those needs have gone away. None of the facility upgrades have gone away. None of the space crunches have gone away. We're looking at a fifth, sixth, and seventh grade class that is very large and coming up in the near future, and we need to address where those space needs are. We have teachers that are sharing rooms, teachers that are on carts, spaces that were, you know, large group areas, spaces are now being used for classrooms in some of the schools. I agree with the facility upgrades also. We have, I looked at the survey that was done by the Space Needs Committee for outside of the school day, and almost every building is being taken up outside of the school day even for use for community activities, whether it's youth sports or 4H or... even for use for community activities, whether it's youth sports or 4H or some other activity. And I think our schools are the center of our community, and when you look at other schools in our conference, they have added on or had referendums that built larger and better facilities. And to be able to bring in school choice students and to bring in families to the district, the schools are what bring them in, and that was also going to help raise revenue. We need to look at, you know, the pool. The pool situation wouldn't have happened had we built the new school because that would have been a gym space at that time when it flooded. And some of the other facility needs, we're unable to host sectional and regional competitions because we don't have the facilities to do that, which, again, is loss of income, and I think it would attract, again, families to this district. I think Milton prides themselves in their schools and in what they offer, both academically and sports-wise, and I think a referendum needs to be looked at.
All right. Thank you. John, a referendum for space needs or operating costs, is it coming?
I think it's going to have to come. As Shelley said, the needs haven't changed since the 2008 design team. They kind of went into hiatus for a while, but they have not really been addressed. If you look at the school district and the number of people that come here for athletic events, show choir events, whatever those activities that are going on all through the school district, it's a huge number of people, hundreds, maybe thousands of people that come through the community. I think it's economic development, and it's an area that could be leveraged. We would want people to come to our facilities. We can't even host some of the things we would have the opportunity to host because they just simply aren't big enough or adequate. They don't meet conference standards. So I think we're falling behind the longer we wait. I think administration in various buildings and staff have done a phenomenal job of using what space they have as creatively as possible. They're using every nook and cranny and continually being creative about that, but there comes a point when there isn't much left to have there. The schools are literally the community center of the community. Their activities constantly, they're operating almost 24 hours a day, probably not quite that, and I think we're slipping because of the needs that have already been stated. So I think we have to get this in front of the community and get the community behind these issues, make them aware of these issues. Operating costs, we may need to look at that as time goes along, as revenue dollars come in and we try to balance out those issues. So yes, on facilities, and certainly possibly on operating costs, depending on how our numbers continue to work out.
All right. Thank you very much. Shelley, you get first crack at the next question. Many parents have expressed concern about class size and student-teacher ratios in the district. Many studies, including even one by the research arm of the U.S. Department of Education, say that smaller class sizes can make a significant difference in student achievement. So with funds tight, how should the district approach this problem?
That's a good question. That was part of our design team realignment proposal back in 2008, was realigning the schools into different grade configurations and using the spaces available to realign some of those grades. Many districts have gone to that, where they have K-2 buildings, 3-5 buildings, that type of thing, and I think they're eventually going to need to do that, but that's not going to help at this moment in time. My son was an example of that. We came from Janesville Jefferson Elementary, where he was in a Sage program, to Northside, where there were 750 students at the time, and so that was a big change. He went from a class of 15 to, I think, 26 in his class. And I know my daughter has experienced that last year in sixth grade and also this year, the larger classes in the middle school. They're going to need to hire staff, which is going to be a big budget impact, and again, there's already teachers sharing classes, and whether they double up at the elementary level, I know some of the schools have two teachers cooperating together in a class, so it reduces the pupil size, but it doesn't reduce the space or make a space any bigger for those kids. I know some schools have went to the old-fashioned outdoor classrooms, the movable trailer rooms, and I would hate to see that happen in Milton, but that might be an option that they would have to look at. I think Northside's trying to use as much space as it can by using its large group activity room. I think they're using some of the common areas in each of the wings as classrooms and space needed. There's going to be a time where there is no other place to put kids, so they're going to have to look at some other option that they can do. And I know the administration's doing the best that they can because it's important, and I feel like sometimes the districts emphasize the younger grades, but I think the middle school and high school are just as important to having the smaller class sizes, especially in lab situations and tech ed situations and places where there needs to be smaller numbers.
All right. Thank you. John, with funds tight, what do we do about class size?
I think we have to be, again, very vigilant about that process. Of course, there's much research that will tell you smaller classes are more effective. There's also opposing research that will tell you it doesn't make a difference. You go in front of a classroom of 25 first graders and tell me if that's different than being in front of a classroom of 15 first graders, and I can tell you there's a huge difference. If you were looking for the finest school you could go to, it'd be nice if it were in Milton, but if you had money and could pay for a private school, you'd look at student-teacher ratio, and you would reduce that ratio in most cases because you want quality one-on-one time. I think that's a concept that's out there that we have to continue to look at. It's not simple because budget dollars are what they are. Again, we've been very creative with the help of staff. We've been very collaborative with administration and staff about how do we solve this problem? Because we were ready to try to put more teachers on, and staff said, "Maybe there are some other ways that will help alleviate this through academic coaches and mentors and some programs of that sort," which have had some success. So we're looking, again, at a variety of options of how to get at that, but if our class size continues to grow or stays big, it won't be as attractive to those open enrollers or people wanting to come to the community. I think that's a pretty big issue with people. From having been in front of groups of people often in my career, whether in public schools or in business settings, that smaller facilitator class-student ratio is almost always a more efficacious kind of system. So I think it's a big deal that we have to look at.
Thank you. Tom?
I agree with both Shelley and John. It's a double-edged sword. It's not only the funding to fund the positions, it's also a place to put them. If we take the class sizes down to even 10 or 15 percent, that's going to add several additional classroom spaces that are going to have to be available. And right now, we don't have that. We don't have that space available to cut the class sizes down. I agree with both Shelley and John. Having smaller class sizes allows the teacher to get to know the students a little better, know their likes and dislikes, maybe their learning styles. With all the, the way the classes are set up now with all different skill levels in one class, I can about imagine what it'd be like putting a lesson plan together, having that many different skill levels. So the lower number of students is effective, more effective. I agree with John. There are some studies out there from the Brookings Institute and the Center for Public Policy that says that class sizes really don't make that much difference, but I do believe that the majority of these studies do say that much more effective to have the star rate down. And again, it is also, it's also very attractive for students, the parents thinking about bringing their students into the Milton School District. If I had young children and I had an opportunity to send my child to a school district that had 15 in a class versus 25 in a class, that would certainly be a factor I'd have to consider very seriously.
All right. Thank you very much. Next question, we will start with John. John, if faced with an unexpected $500,000 decrease in revenue, what would be your first three considerations to balance the budget?
Well, that would be a fun prospect of facing that. I think you would have to lay out your program. I think the board would have to get with administration. We'd have to lay out the program and begin to look at what affects students the least. What can we take out that's going to affect students the least? And everything we do is good for students or we wouldn't be doing it. So that's a very tough list to go through, but I think you start there and you begin to pare, if you have to pare down, by taking those that we think, in our infinite wisdom, that will be the least effective, and you work that list until you can come to a number. For me to give you what is the program that I would X out immediately, I don't know that I have that in my mind right now. I would be looking to administration, I would be looking to professional staffing. There would be some very clear socializing decisions to try to sort that through. There are going to be probably as many opinions about that as there are people in the community. That's a tough nut to get at, so I can't answer a singular issue. I just can think of a process that we would have to go through to do that.
All right. Thank you. Tom, if we lose a half million dollars in revenue, considerations to balance the budget?
The school district of Milton has a little over 3,500 students in the district, and I agree with John. The first thing we would have to look at is what would be the least detrimental to the students? About 75 percent of our budget is for wages, salaries, and benefits. Unfortunately, if you look at taking away part of that, that's going to possibly affect class sizes again, which we certainly don't want it to go any bigger than it is. It's crept up to too high as it is. But I agree with John. I don't think at this point in time I would be able to give you three areas where we could cut that would be less harmful for the students. That would be something we'd have to have many discussions with the other board members and with administration. It would be a tough, it would be a tough process. Could we do it? Absolutely. There would be some people that would be very unhappy with probably some of the needed cuts to get there, but we have a district that has been very conservative on the fiscal end over the last few years, the possibility of looking at some fund balance reduction or something like that, which may be less harmful to the students in the long run, but it would be a tough exercise for sure.
All right. Thank you. Shelley?
Okay, I agree too. It would be a difficult decision to make, assuming most of the buildings are already at 0 percent budget increases, but maybe even looking back at that to see if they can cut their yearly budgets with supplies and different things that are, you know, being asked for in the buildings. Transportation might be an area you could look at combining some of the bus routes and cutting costs with transportation situations, which, again, would make families happy, but that might be one area I'd look at. The Fund 10 balance is definitely an area you don't want to have to depend on every year, but Milton has been able to build up their Fund 10 balance over the last several years, and I would look at using some of those funds for that. And unfortunately, you may have to look at the technology plan again. The high school had to wait a year for their technology plan because they didn't have the funding for that this year, and we would maybe have to relook at that and see if there's something we would have to do in that area. It would be a really collaborative decision that would have to be, and possibly looking at the levy rate and the yearly budget and increasing the tax rate, which citizens aren't happy with that, but if you want that versus having to go to referendum for operating costs, I think that's another way to look at things.
Very good. Thank you. Well, we've come to the end of our forum, so we have one last closing statement from each of you, so we will start once again with Tom. Tom, just for your closing remarks, why should we vote for you?
I've had the opportunity to finish one term, one three-year term. We've had some very interesting times in those three years that I've been on the board. I think with the experience I've had in my other board volunteer positions and my background in education, I think I bring some common sense, level-headed thinking, being able to just come up with some solutions that may not be the best for one particular group, but coming up with some ideas and solutions that would be for the betterment of the school district and most of all, our students. After all, that's why we have the School District of Milton. It's because of the students. It's not because of the people we employ, it's not because of the athletic teams that we support, but it's because of the students in the classroom.
All right. Thank you very much. Challenger, Shelley Krulhanke, why should we vote for you?
Well, as a graduate of Janesville Public School System, I can say I honestly had great, awesome teachers at every level of my schooling in Janesville, and I feel like my children in Milton, since we moved to the Milton district, can say the same. And I want every family to be able to say that about the teachers and staff and people and administrators they work with in Milton. We were fortunate for my son to start at Northside, and he had teachers right away that just got his style and knew how to deal with him and how to work with him. My daughter was fortunate enough to start in kindergarten at Harmony, and we realized what a family harmony was. Every school in the district has its own unique, diverse qualities, which makes it just a great school district to be in. And I want to ensure that all students and families have that same opportunity and feel that way that we do about Milton. I've looked at the generous donations people make to this district and come together as a community when there's a staff or student in need, and I just think every family should be able to experience that through the school system, and I want to be a person that can represent the families of Milton. Since I'm in the classroom on a daily basis, I have to work with administration and families and deal with all those issues that come with the school district and school board position, and I feel that I'm a good candidate and qualified to do that. I have my own children in the district, so I know some of the issues that are facing some of the staff and some of the buildings, and feel comfortable that I can talk to the administrators in the different buildings. And I have gotten lots of input from families of all different age students and have gotten what they feel the needs are in the district and feel that I can represent those families the best, so I ask for your vote on April 1st.
Thank you very much. Incumbent John Cruzan, why should we vote for you?
I think my six years on the board speaks for something. Coming onto a board like a school board is a huge learning curve. I don't think anyone has any idea of the scope of board activities until you really begin to get involved, and it takes a long time to get up speed of several things. So I think that six years of experience stands me in very good stead to do that. I think my track record, if that's the word to use, it feels a little awkward to say that word, track record in the city of Milton. I have been a volunteer, served on, I don't want to list all the committees and organizations and things I've been involved with, because I believe that's what we as citizens need to do in our lives, and I feel the same way about the school board. I think that's a unique way that I can give back to the community, and Milton is number one for me. Again, I raised kids here, I'm raising grandkids here, my grandkids are in the school district. I only want very good things for Milton. As I stated at the beginning, I'm a believer in education. I have a family background of academia and those kinds of issues, and I see it as vital to any society, any community. I would like Milton's emphasis on that to be the best that it can be so that we are growing up responsible, mature citizens who can, again, take care of us in our old age and run this community the way we think it ought to be run. I think my experience in the area, I think my track record of the things I've been involved in, I'm a pretty, like to think I'm a pretty unpretentious person. What you see is what you get, not, I have no agendas, no issues of that kind. I think I'm a very good board member, and I'd love to have your support for another term.
Thank you very much. School board candidates, Tom Westrick, Shelley Krulhanke, John Cruzan. On behalf of the Milton Area Chamber of Commerce, thank you very much for joining us this evening and participating in this forum. We are going to take a short break, and we will be back at 7 o'clock with the city council candidates.